Chakutis.
Present.
President, Counsel Calucci.
Present.
President, Counsel Field.
Present.
President, Counsel Hogan.
Present.
President, Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
President, Counsel Lozey.
Present.
President, Counsel Net.
Present.
President, Counsel Staubid.
Present.
President, Counsel Walsh.
Present.
President, Counsel Sear.
Present. For a moment of silence on the eve of 9/11, let us remember all the heroes from 9/11.
I'd also like to say a moment of silence for Gary Kalapinski and his family.
Captain Al Sercio.
Family of Deborah Lobb. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Except for minutes from the August 13th meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications?
I have a letter from the mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Kenneth Santoro, 87 Woodland South, as my designee to serve on the Lynn Community Access of Media, Inc. Mr. Santoro's term is effective immediately and shall expire once Lynn Cam is dissolved as a corporation of the Massachusetts Secretary of State's office. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
So, wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Approved.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Is the new dog officer here? Yep, roll call. Okay, just introducing him, I'm sorry. This is our new dog officer. Thank you. Public hearings.
We have a public hearing on an ordinance to adopt the Stretch Energy Code in the city of Lynn.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Lozey?
I'd like to speak on it, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to point out, this is the final criteria for Lynn to become a green community. I'm very excited about this. As you, my colleagues know, and many in the city, there's been a lot of hard work and input by many offices in this hall. And this is going to be a very good thing for the city of Lynn. We're going to receive a half a million dollars upon designation, becoming a green community immediately. And then every year thereafter, we'll be eligible for up to $250,000 in any energy-efficient programs, like replacing a boiler in a school, windows in a firehouse. This is a very good program. Over 200 communities in this state have become green communities. This is overdue. I've been leading this charge for three years now, so I'm very pleased that we've reached this point. And after tonight, I think we're completing what is necessary. So, thank you. And I believe, I do want to point out that Mr. Neil Duffy is in the audience if any counselor has a question or a concern. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes. Before we go any further, I notice there's a celebrity amongst us in the crowd tonight. It's probably going to be a little embarrassing that I'm going to introduce him, but Sheriff Frank Cousins is in the audience tonight. Thank you. Next public hearing.
We have the petition of Rachel Rich Guzy of Hollywood, Florida, to be a cannabis product manufacturer at 82-86 Sanderson Ave., Unit 210, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I'm here on behalf of Essence Labs. With me is the Principal Officer of Essence Labs, Rachel Rich Guzy. Also, the Chief Technical Officer is Rabbi Aaron Balcony. And what we propose, Mr. President, is a first here in the city of Lynn and I think also somewhat east of the Mississippi. And that's the production of kosher marijuana products. I know, Mr. President, because you and I have discussed this, that you were opposed to medical marijuana and you were opposed to recreational marijuana, but as a public servant, your duty is to uphold what the laws of this Commonwealth are. And the voters, not only in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but in the city of Lynn, in 2012 overwhelmingly approved medical marijuana. And we work with you to have the first medical dispensary on the Linway, and it's open with no little problems. And then subsequent, the voters of Massachusetts voted to approve adult-use recreational marijuana. And again, the citizens of the city of Lynn voted overwhelmingly to support that. And the council should be commended in you, sir, for your leadership with respect to enacting an ordinance that would ensure that this new industry was well-regulated and one which would meet with acceptance within the city of Lynn with due regard for its neighborhoods and its citizens. That process that the council put in place, and I was one of the first to deal with it, required that any applicant first be vetted by the Economic Development Corporation. I think Mr. Caudell is here. And he and his staff put together a process by which they determined the qualifications of individuals, suitability of sites, their financial ability to carry on in this industry, which is a new industry here in Massachusetts. The second part of that was, and the Cannabis Control Commission established by the governor and the legislature, was that there be a community outreach meeting. And I know many councilors here have attended, not only community outreach meetings in their own wards for facilities that were proposed, but in general, because of their interest as to the effect on the city and the neighborhoods. And then subsequent to that, if you go through this process, you come before Counsel Staubid's Recreational Adult Use Site Plan Review Committee, and if you pass through there, you get to here, and this is where we are. In this process, you've been involved as the ward counselor, because what we propose is to use a facility that has been used for similar processes. Many food manufacturers are now located at 82 to 86 Sanderson Ave., where very few people, maybe buzzy, I don't know, who's old enough to remember, Cushman's Bakery. I'm one of those that remembers Cushman's Bakery. I played ball at Kylie Playground. I remember the smell of making bread. And Cushman's left, and then the building has evolved, much like the Lydia Pinkham Building, as an incubator. And in that facility, we've got people making pizza sauce, we've got people making pizza dough, we've got people, Sidekem, one of the biggest manufacturers and distributors of prepared foods. That's the location. I know you're familiar with it. I brought a photograph for those who aren't familiar. That's the building. And what I want you to understand is, when you see this building, and my clients take up 2,700 square feet of space on the second floor at the rear, in a place that looks like a fortress, you won't know they're there, because they're going to operate nine to five, Mondays through Fridays. They're going to have no signs, they're going to have no consumers, no customers, no people standing in line, no people parking cars, no retail business. Their business is to take, as the people in the industry talk about, from seed to shelf. So you take the flower, you take the plant, you take an extract, and you manufacture consumables, whether it's tincture that goes on for people who have arthritis, or whether it's consumables as food products. But there's one difference with what's proposed by Essence Labs. Not only are they going to meet the highest industry standards, they're going to meet biblical standards. Because they propose to have the product that they extract and manufacture be kosher. And I've learned a lot about kosher products. Rachel was the one who told me, because I like Oreos, that Oreos are a kosher product. Jordan Avery, who's our security consultant, when we had the community meeting, stopped at the convenience store and brought chocolate chip cookies, and the rabbi said, "See this symbol? These are kosher." So, people don't understand or appreciate that many, many, many products have that designation. But here, there are studies that they made available to me, which says that people of the Jewish faith, people who keep that tradition, and others, because one thing about, I've learned about kosher is, it's essentially if it grows in the ground, it's organic, that's the first start towards being a kosher product. And then there are high industry standards and biblical standards, as I indicate, to get the kosher certification. Somebody handed Rachel a bottle of Poland Springs water, and I hate to do commercials, but there's a little symbol on it, and she pointed out to me that it says Poland Springs Spring Water. It's a kosher product. So what they propose to do is have 10 or 12 people, hopefully from Lynn, that they will hire, to work at this facility, to take this product, which is a lawful one, do this process, have it certified, have to go through the various testings of the state laboratories, and all of those, but there's an added level to satisfy the requirements to be a kosher product. Mr. President, when we had the neighborhood meeting, you were there. And one of the neighbors who showed up skeptical, asked some very good questions. The people who were there provided, I think, sufficient answers. And the woman made a comment that I just would like to close upon, because I thought it was kind of really unique. So she said, "Where else is this?" And the rabbi answered that, "Well, there's some fellow in New York, but he really does it in Colorado, and there's nobody really here east of the Mississippi that's doing this." And she said, "Oh, Lynn, we'll be a city of firsts." And I said to her, and I say to you, "If you grant permission tonight, then you carry on a proud tradition that makes the Lynn the city of firsts. I'd be glad to answer any questions that any member may have."
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You'll have to come to the podium, ma'am. And you'll have to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Joyce Coogan, 30 Pleasant Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. I have a sign here, because I know sometimes hearing is one way, but also if you see with your eyes something written. But it says, "Let's be rational and face reality." It's recreational marijuana. They're driving around the city. You can smell it when you're walking down the street. If you're in a car, you may not, well, you can still smell if your windows are down. That means they're driving when they're smoking. Let's be honest about it. Let's be real in here. So it's spelled recreational, W-R-E-C-K. I want everyone to see it. Recreational marijuana, W-R-E-C-K. They're driving when they're smoking marijuana. They're endangering other people's lives and their own. People smoke marijuana because they have an issue with something in their life that they're not happy about, they want to escape reality. I was in a hospital, and the nurse, I was in an emergency room as a patient, and a nurse told me that they get many, many people, they are young people, that have overdone on the marijuana. You need to see both sides of this. You need to have your eyes wide open to see both sides of what's going on. This is not lifting our city up. It's bringing our city down. These young people that are overdoing on the marijuana, going to the emergency room in the hospital, if you drive the bus, I drive a bus, the windows cannot be opened unless the driver has open windows. They come on the bus, it's on their clothes. I see young mothers bringing the infant children in baby carriers. The smell of the marijuana, let's face it, it smells like a skunk. And to be honest with you, that should give you a clue. That should give you a clue. It smells like a skunk. I'm being honest in here. You might not really want to hear this, but we need to. Now, I used to smoke marijuana. I'm not throwing stones at anybody. When I was a teenager and younger, before I realized what it really is about. Now, these children are breathing, we're giving, we're approving wick for these children to have a healthier lifestyle, and they're breathing marijuana before their lungs are even developed. They're on the bus, and the smell is overreaching, even if they go to the back of the bus, you have to smell it. Bus drivers have told me they smell this. One bus driver, he said he gets a headache. They smoke right outside the bus before they go on. I was walking up the street one day, you need to see both sides of this why I'm saying this, because I've gotten quite an education in the last couple of years. I started noticing the smell of marijuana in the city. I was walking, I was on the street one day, there was three men, it wasn't even 11 o'clock in the morning, they were smoking marijuana in the middle of the street. There was outside of business. It's not fair to name the business, because I don't think the business knew what they were doing. But they were picking up furniture, or they were doing something outside this furniture store. They were going to be getting into the car, because they were the ones that were, they were the truck, so that means they're going to be driving in that truck when they're smoking marijuana before 11 o'clock in the morning. You have to see both sides of this issue. It's a drug. It doesn't matter how you say it, it's a drug. And we don't want people overdosing in the city of Lynn. I've seen the fire department go down. I was in Central Square, a man was on the ground overdosing from fentanyl. We don't want them overdosing, and yet we're allowing marijuana in the city. It's very heartbreaking and sad to see this. Our children are growing up smelling marijuana in the streets. They're taking, they're getting those, all these other means that they have marijuana. Children have been eating the marijuana with the Kombi beers. Now let's face reality, please. Reject this for everyone's health, for everyone's sake. That this needs to be really realized rationally.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, and that's what I want to say, because, no, I don't want... I didn't want to be receiving applause, I didn't want to say that, I don't want to be receiving applause, but this is speaking on behalf of a lot of people, how they feel here. But let's help people not to be on drugs, not help, even though alcohol might be legal, it doesn't mean you have to open up a package store. It doesn't mean you have to be a bartender. The city, the people made marijuana legal, it wasn't, I don't understand that, but the thing is now that it is. We don't have to perpetuate it and keep feeding into it and allowing it to multiply. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to, I'm going to give everyone five minutes to come up and say whatever it is that you want to say at any point, whether you're in favor of it or opposed to it. There's a lot of people here, and we have a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. So that being said, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I just ran up here quickly because I have my baby over there.
Could you please state your name and address?
Natasha Antonelli, I live at 23 Breed Street, so I just wanted to come up here quickly because I have my son with me. But first of all, there are a lot of kids in the neighborhood, there's a school right down the street. We don't have enough parking already, it's kind of hard to find a parking spot. It's kind of hard to find a parking spot already, so I think...
Okay, this, just to let you know, this is not about Lewis Street. This is about Sanderson Ave.
Oh, okay.
A pot lab, which is not a dispensary.
Oh, right.
Pot, cannabis is not going to be sold at this location to the public. So that hearing will be in a few minutes. Do you wish to speak on this, on the Sanderson Ave lab?
No.
Okay, so, anyone wishing to speak in opposition for the cannabis lab? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I'm giving everyone an opportunity of five minutes to speak.
Just to clarify, are you going to speak about the Lewis dispensary later on?
That is going to be in another hearing in a little bit. Right now, this is about the cannabis lab.
Oh, so my name is Jocelyn Reynoso, I live at 157 Linfield Street in Lynn. I'm representing the U.S. Christian Chaplain's Association, the Seven Day Adventist Church, and the Hispanic community here tonight. We're just here opposing dispensaries of any marijuana, to be specific. Just down, I know we're not talking about the Lewis Street one, but just down the street, feet away from the church, you guys, there's planning on opening this dispensary. And the concern of the church and the Hispanic community is that there's kids. And these kids are, like she previously said, they're smelling this, and they're growing up with this. And the U.S. Christian Chaplain's Association has been working at High Rock Tower, cleaning the park, and just trying to make it look nice for the community again. But our main concern is that if we're going to allow, if you're going to allow this dispensary to be open...
This is not a dispensary, again. This is about a lab.
So, but at the same time, like, if, I feel like we should think about more of the children growing up in the city. Of course, next to these churches as well, because as the faith is recalled, I feel like if you're going to be planning on opening this, it shouldn't be near a church or a religious center.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the lab? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Vicenta, I live in 1C4 Allen Ave. I know it's very English, but I want you to understand me, she translated for me.
Okay, you know, are you speaking about the lab?
Yeah, I speak about the lab.
You have to speak into the mic, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Is the laboratory specifically to create marijuana? Is that what she's saying?
It's not to create marijuana, no. It's to take marijuana and to put it, make medicines out of it, and other things that can be made from cannabis. It is going to be kosher lab, and it's going to be the only one of its kind on the East Coast.
What she's trying to say is that she understands that this is a big moneymaker, and that you're trying to bring money to the city. But at the same time, she also has the right to oppose to it, because what she's thinking is, what is her right? You trying to do this, but her obligation to her and the city and her family is not like the belief of you opening a laboratory. It doesn't matter how much money you're making here for the city. What she's trying to say is that she understands that you make laws, and, but she wants something that is going to be fair for everybody else as well.
Okay.
Okay, for example... Okay, what she's trying to say is, for example, the cigarettes and marijuana, she gets headaches by, you know, smelling it. And everywhere around here, everybody's doing it. So, what she's trying to say, that they have the right to smoke it, or whatever you're going to do with it, but her right is not to smell that and to deal with it as well. So what is her right? What she's saying is, what is her right? We are the people, we want you to be just fair.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak, was? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Gaudy Joe Francois, and my address is 71 Michigan Ave. I've been a resident of the city of Lynn for a number of years. I think it is unfair to see that in my neighborhood, you guys plan on having two more marijuana clinic in the city, and in Ward Three, I mean, two marijuana clinic in Ward Three. In the meantime, Ward One has none. Nahad has none. Swamp Court has none. Marblehead has none. My question to you folks, to all of you here, sitting here, who are you working for? For us or for those guys? I have no issues with people that smoke marijuana, but I don't, I think it is unfair to see everything has to be either in Ward Six, where people of colors live, or Ward Three, where we live. The next step is going to be Ward Four then. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Diana Martinez, and I live in Heian Lynn, and I live in Merrill Avenue. What I'm trying to say is, I understand that you're trying to open a lab, and I'm totally, totally against it. We already, I don't care if it's medicine or not, I think in the long run, it becomes an addiction. And addiction is something horrible. I think it's, almost every family has been dealing with this, okay? And if you want to open this thing, I don't think it will be the best place to do it here. I think we have, Lynn is one of the places that has come a long way, and it's better looking now than it was before. And we don't want no more death, no more overdose, and medicine, medicine or not medicine, we just don't need it here, okay? There is some other places that you might want to do it, but not here in Lynn. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counsel Barton.
What's the wish of the council? Counsel Sear?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Counsel Sear?
Thank you. I know there's a lot, there are a lot of people in the audience tonight who are opposed to cannabis, and I can appreciate that. And I voted not to make pot legal, but citizens of Massachusetts voted in favor of that. And this council had to take a look at what our options were. Two or three years ago, we were presented with, from our law department, told that we had to create an ordinance in order to protect the citizens of the city. In a way that they, we are obligated to have at least eight cannabis shops. In a way that they, we, we are obligated to have at least eight cannabis shops in the city, by law. And they base that on how many liquor stores there are in the city. That's number one. Number two, this is not a recreational cannabis, um, place where people can walk in off the street and buy cannabis. What they're gonna be doing at this, it's a lab, and it is more secure than any bank that you walk into in America. It is so heavily, uh, that the way that they do this is from the moment you have a seed and put it in the ground, that seed is registered, and the plant is, got a, got a number. And they know for a fact where that plant goes to. They even know what it's used for, whether it's used in a lab, like in this process, or whether it goes to a cannabis store and it's all at retail or at a medical store. They know who buys it. They know how much you buy. It's more regulated than anything in America right now. And in Massachusetts is the toughest place to do business. It takes anywhere from a year to 18 months. If they're approved tonight, they have to go to the state and get approval from the state. So the city does get 6% of the profits, and I believe 2% of it is used for impact, meaning they can hire police, fire trucks. It has to be given back to public safety. The other 4% goes into our general fund. With the eight dispensaries that we're talking about throughout the city and with this lab that we're talking about, we're looking at the potential of $10 million a year of revenue coming into the city. We need to build new schools, we need to fix our roads, we need to put police on the street, give our fire department brand-new fire trucks. And I get it, believe me, I get it. This is probably the most controversial thing going on in the city. No matter what our personal, our religious feelings are, the voters of this city voted in favor. And myself, as an elected official, have to respect that. Now, I've had a lot of people come to me in the last two years that wanna open up pot stores and labs, and we vet every single one of those people. There is a process. It starts with that. EDIC, it goes to our cannabis, uh, cannabis commission, and they have to prove to us that they're viable and capable and financially solid enough to be able to do this. They have to prove to us that it's gonna be a secured facility and that all the residents of our city are gonna be safe. It's safer to walk in, and believe it or not, and I'm not in favor of it and I don't do it, but I drink beers, but it's, it's safer to buy that than it is to walk into a liquor store right now. But getting back to the lab, the reason I am in favor of it is because what they are gonna do, they're gonna create jobs in our community. Nobody's even gonna know it's there. It's delivered in an unmarked vehicle, and it leaves in an unmarked vehicle. It's stored in a secured facility. It, they have security, there are cameras, high-tech cameras that are all around this. Nobody will even know that this lab is in that building. The only reason why anybody will know is because we have to have a public hearing, because we have to give a special permit. The only person from the neighborhood who came was Gardi, and I agree with some of the things that he was saying. Why does it always seem like it's dumped in Lynn? Well, we voted in favor of it, and that's why I'm in favor of this lab going there.
Any other counsel? Other than a roll call?
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Present.
Present. Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing is for an act authorizing the city of Lynn to use certain park land for combined sewer overflow control.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Councilor Walsh.
Is it you, Hogan? It's Hogan, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Hogan. I thought it was in your one.
We actually did a land swap there, so, um, we're, we're gonna do a motion to approve this.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey absent?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Heather Hannan, owner of Essex Apothecary, 233 Western Ave, for an adult used cannabis permit store to be located at 233 Western Ave with hours Monday through Thursday, 8 to 8:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10 to 9:00 p.m.
Again, I'm gonna ask, uh, because we have a lot going on, that everybody try to be as brief as they can, five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Heather Hannan, 30 Portland Street, Lynn Ave, or Lynn, Mass. My name is Heather Hannan, owner and operator of Essex Apothecary, a woman-owned, woman-run adult recreational cannabis store. The store will be located at 233 Western Ave in Lynn, Ward One. The store will be open six days a week, Monday through Saturday and close on Sunday. We are of the belief that Sunday is a family day. We will pledge to be good corporate citizens, good neighbors, and good community citizens. I strongly believe in investing in Lynn and being involved in the community. As a single mother who is living in Lynn and is raising her daughter in Lynn, Essex Apothecary will focus our community efforts on children, education, and art. I'm excited to be a member of the community for years to come. I have a clear vision of how I see our, my business operating in the neighborhood in partnership with other local businesses and community leaders. Essex Apothecary will also focus on customer service and educating our customers. We'll work diligently to have the most knowledgeable and well-trained employees on hand to serve our customers. Additionally, we will establish partnerships with wellness and mental health services organizations to be responsible cannabis retailers. A few months ago, we heard from our neighbors regarding questions and concerns. Three points rose to the surface. Security, parking, and traffic. Security. Typically, typically cannabis stores have at least two or three more times cameras than a bank. In addition, our head of security has a very impressive resume and was referred to us by former Essex County Sheriff Frank Cousins, the celebrity in the house. Parking. We have over 20 dedicated parking spots. In terms of traffic, we know that with any new business, there's usually an influx of traffic in the beginning. The city has seen this with any other businesses, such as the opening of Popeyes in Lynn. We have been in dialogue with the city officials about this issue, and if traffic starts to cause ongoing problems for our neighbors and residents, we will consider managing customer flow by shifting an appointment-only-based system. Now let's shift our focus to local economy and independent business ecosystem here. As a Lynn resident and constituent, we are excited to bring significant revenue to Lynn. We care about this community. We care about hiring local and supporting our peers. As an example, the waiting room of Essex Apothecary will be an art gallery for local artists only. We will bid local, we will hire local, and we'll keep everything as locally sourced as possible. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Charlene Sanderson, 22 Atlantic Street, Lynn. Um, I'm here to support the dispensaries opening. I wish I had had a chance, um, for the Sanderson Ave venue, I would have supported that as well. But, um, it's not about whether or not we like it, it's legal. You, it's, there's, you can't have a religious objection to it. And I think it's gonna bring a lot of revenue to Lynn. She's from Lynn, it's a woman-owned business, I fully support it. I smoke marijuana, I don't drink, I eat marijuana, I put it on my body, it helps me tremendously. And I think it's a, it can be a benefit to a lot of other people who don't have medical cards. Thank you.
Thank you.[1204.83][1204.83](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Frank Cousins, I live at 6 Orange Street in Newburyport, Mass. Uh, Mr. President, thank for allowing me to say a few words. I had the opportunity of meeting Heather Hannan when she came to the city of Newburyport. The city of Newburyport, um, we are in the process of, uh, looking at two retail sites for our city. We also have a grow facility which has been approved by our city council and, uh, city zoning. Uh, she came up to, uh, look at those areas. Um, at that time, she asked me if I knew anybody that would be interested in being the director of security. I gave the reference for Harrison Whitney, um, who is, uh, going to be her director of security. He worked for me at the sheriff's department for about six and a half years, and he was also inspector in the Newburyport Police Department, and he has a long service in security and public safety. He's a very honorable person. Also, uh, like you, I voted against the, um, change in the mass general laws, uh, but I understand the will of the people. I'm very cautious about this. I had a, um, very comfortable meeting with Heather. Uh, she, uh, my new capacity, I'm the president of the Newburyport Chamber of Commerce. Um, she's looking for a couple, one location in the city of Newburyport. She asked me if I would speak on behalf of, uh, Mr. Whitney and, uh, my feelings about how she has followed the, the rules and set forth by you and the city of Lynn here and the council, and I find her to be a very upstanding and honest person, and I felt very comfortable there. And I appreciate you allowing me to speak in front of your council, even though I'm a, a resident of the city of Lynn, and appreciate, um, your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.[1314.28][1314.28](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the counsel? Councilor Lozey?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll, too late, it's closed.
Councilor Barton?
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Next public hearing is petition of Chris Mitchum of Portland, Oregon, to open a marijuana retail business at 229 Lewis Street, also known as One Chestnut Street, seven days per week, 9 to 8:00 p.m.
Again, I'm gonna ask that everybody try to be as brief as they can, try to use five minutes to say what you have to say. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, my name is Jim Smith. I'm an attorney representing DM. Uh, with me, uh, well, with Smith, Costello, and Crawford. With me is Jonathan Cipano, also with our firm. Uh, this is the dispensary at the corner of Lewis and Chestnut, on Chestnut Street, at 1A. I want to echo what Attorney Vitale said. These are very tough issues. Uh, I did not go to law school to study cannabis. Uh, seven years ago, I received a call-[1417.33][1417.33](APPLAUSE)
Please be quiet when, when someone is at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I received the call and someone asked if I would help them understand the new regulations. I got involved then and under, do understand these regulations. They are clearly the toughest in the nation. I think anybody in this industry, uh, now acknowledges that. Attorney Vitale did mention, uh, that the citizens of this Commonwealth and of this city, uh, supported this issue. Uh, it was about a 54 to 46, it was not overwhelming, but it is state law, and the state law mandates, it's not optional, it mandates the city of Lynn to have eight of these dispensaries. You have already allowed special permits for seven. This is the eighth. There will already be seven across the city, not a one of which is in Ward Three. This will be the first, Mr. President, in Ward Three. You also have two cultivations in the city, or, as of this evening, a second cultivation. This is not uncommon, as you just heard from former Sheriff Cousins. Newburyport has both cultivation and will have its, uh, quota as well of dispensaries. Every city or town in the Commonwealth will have dispensaries except those whose voters voted down this, uh, this issue, um, back in 2016. Now, as others have done, we met with the EDIC, we brought DM through that process, we had a community meeting, we had a public meeting at the council subcommittee, and over and above that, we notified our neighbors, not just those within a 300 feet. We went everywhere in our neighborhood. We dropped flyers, we obviously have the item ad, this, at this meeting as well has been advertised. We went out ourselves from DM to drop flyers. We want our neighbors to know who we are and why we're here. And as I said, this is Lynn's last special permit, at least as a mandate under the statute. Lynn has to issue eight, this would be number eight. There have been issues raised, uh, and I'd like to go through them very quickly, uh, if I may, Mr. President. First, an issue of security. Nothing is more secure than a cannabis retail facility. There will be more cameras in that facility, you cannot approach it, in fact, you can't walk on Chestnut Street in front of one chestnut without being on camera. You can't come to our door without us seeing you and having a picture of you. You won't even get into our door unless you can show the person outside or the camera outside that you have a legitimate government-issued ID that shows you're 21. If you come in a baby carriage and bring your little infant, we won't allow you to come in. Your infant is not 21. Once you get past that security, Mr. President, you then meet with a second security where your government-issued ID goes through a very, those complex kind of, um, machines that tell you that the thing is legitimate. That's the second time, and then, and only then are you allowed into the dispensary. Unlike a liquor store, you can't pick up the bottle and kind of look at it, or walk around and see what's for sale, you can't touch the product. You cannot touch the product, and you actually can't even see the product. Uh, there will be a list of what is available. If you choose to purchase something for the third time, we'll want to see your ID. Those are the regulations. Security is incredible. The bag that we put this in, you will not be able to open. I have a customer, a client out in Worcester, I went out to Worcester, I purchased a product. My wife and I couldn't open that darn thing, she finally took scissors out at home and cut the thing open. We couldn't get that bag open, and we did try sincerely. Those are regulations, however. That's what's required. The security here, what you're doing here this evening, what this council has done with some very wise zoning, with appropriate buffer zones between the schools and between other cannabis dispensaries, you've done the right thing, you've met your statutory obligation. This is a safe and secure product. We've heard issues of parking. Mr. President, we have made huge efforts in that neighborhood to purchase or to lease parking. We are about ready to announce that we've got something. We will meet the parking requirement, in fact, we will exceed the zoning parking requirement at this facility. Traffic issues? There are 23 dispensaries in this state. The first two had quite a bit of traffic, the next 21, not so much. By the time we open, 12 to 18 months, and likely frankly, 18 months of this night, we'll probably be number 123. It won't be an event. It'll be no different than opening a convenience store. There are a whole lot of them around, will be one more at that, at that point in time. Traffic truly won't be an issue at this location. We have met all the zoning ordinances, we met the, it's an appropriately-zoned area, uh, we've met the buffer zones with schools and other facilities. I've also heard a little bit about housing as an issue. There are two units. We, as I said, probably don't need those units for up to 18 months. We would let those folks know at least six months in advance, and at our expense, we will relocate them to housing in the immediate neighborhood. We will find housing, uh, for those two folks in those, in those units. Lastly, I want to speak to the issue of cannabis, which I had not planned on speaking, but obviously a lot of folks have some serious concerns about cannabis. It is far safer than alcohol. The reason I think this issue passed in this state is because of the illicit market. Our goal is to destroy that market. Recent studies have shown that 85% of all the cannabis you heard about this evening is purchased on the illicit market. It is untested. You have no idea what's in that product. If your kids are buying it, if you know anybody that's buying it, tell them not to. Who knows what they're buying, where it came from, who's profiting, how that whole system works. But I will tell you, you can probably purchase it at any middle school in the state. This product is tested, and oftentimes, doesn't pass test, it cannot be sold. This product is a safe product. It is tested, and in fact, major lab is from a Lynn- This product is tested, and oftentimes, doesn't pass test, it cannot be sold. This product is a safe product. It is tested, and in fact, major lab is from a Lynn native owns it, who, the lab is over in Salem right now. This product is tested so that if you do purchase this product, you know it's a safe product. 85% of all the product out there, we have no idea what it is. I've met with the Lynn Community Health Center, the new CEO. He's an addiction doctor. He supports adult-use marijuana. He said, "You know, I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of my patients," and we test them. And they say, "Oh, we had marijuana doc," and those tests come back with all kinds of stuff in their system. Those products were purchased on the street, on the street corners all across Massachusetts, and they are unsafe. This legitimate market, tested, taxed, regulated, secure, and based on state law that we, the citizens in this democracy, we decided this was going to be appropriate. And the legislature then did the appropriate thing and said, "Okay, how are we going to do this?" Well, if your city or town voted for it, 20% of your package store licenses. That means there'll be five times as many package stores across the city, 40, as there will be dispensaries, eight ultimately. Mr. President, this is the statute. These are our laws. We are a country still of laws. This product is not unsafe. It is incredibly regulated. I can certainly attest to that, and I do hope that this council grants special permit to these people. I'd like to take a moment to introduce to you DM. I brought to this city somebody who, you know I'm native here, I spent over 40 years of my life here, Capano still lives, is a lot less than 40 years here. DM is a company from Oregon. They're in business. They're well-capitalized. The most challenging issue for a legitimate cannabis market is capital. They have capital. They've been very successful in Oregon. They want to come to our state. They're opening in Worcester. They have a, with a dispensary in Worcester. They have a cultivation underway in Orange. Now they want to come to our city. They are our eighth last and last, frankly, special permit. I do hope you approve them. They are a very, very strong company. I want to introduce Chris Mitchum, who was our CEO and president, to run through quickly a little more background on DM.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and address.
Hi there. My name is Chris Mitchum. I'm the CEO of DM Cannabis. I'd like to introduce a couple of folks I brought with me from DM tonight. First is Johnny D'Novella up there. He's going to click the button on the slideshow. We're going to run through a few quick slides. Ben Allmond, our chief operating officer. Alex Haubert, our production manager. And Matt Busby, our construction manager. Thank you all so much for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak. It's an honor to be here. I'm going to run through these slides, give you a little bit of background on us and our plans for Lynn. So, to President Seer's point earlier, you know, this passed in Massachusetts in 2016. I know many of the councilors here opposed it. They're just doing their best to roll it out safely and pick the right people to entrust with rolling this out in the city. I want to talk to you a little bit why I think DM and our team is a great group to trust with this big responsibility. First, a little bit about us. I'm a normal guy. I'm not a wealthy guy. I don't come from a big wealthy family. I'm not a corporate guy. My parents are working class. They worked their butts off so that I could go to college. I went to college, got a job with a corporation who, you know, luckily paid for me to get an MBA. I decided to become an entrepreneur about four years ago, and I got into the cannabis industry. I'm married to my high school sweetheart. I have a 15-month-old son. I have a daughter on the way due in November. We're normal people up here. You know, we're not, we're not crazy people. We're trying to do this the right way and operate it like a business. I started this company with my dad and my best friend from high school. We started our first dispensary in Salem, Oregon. There's a picture of it, our first dispensary there on that slide. We also, we were lucky to have some success with that dispensary, and we reinvested our profits to start a farm and a processing facility in Oregon as well. And then after that, we started a delivery service, home delivery, which is legal in Oregon right now. We started that in Portland, Oregon, the biggest city. And, you know, to our pleasant surprise, we became the biggest home delivery service in the state. We've been blessed to have a lot of success. It's all due to our team. We have 40 people on our team now. I can't even believe I'm saying that right now, 40 employees. Our motto is "Work hard and be a good person." It's the first thing you see when you looked at my LinkedIn page. It's what we live by. It's why we've been successful. We're good business people. We don't screw people over. We follow the rules, and that's why communities have trusted us. We've never broken a law or done anything wrong. We're doing this the right way. We have an award-winning brand. We've made a point not to make it over-the-top cannabis pot. You know, we, there's no Bob Marley posters. It's very clean. It's very inviting. It's very open, and it doesn't really stand out as a marijuana store, which, again, I think people have responded really well to from a customer standpoint. One of the things that, the most important thing that we're bringing to Lynn is our experience in the industry. We've been doing this for three years. We're not new at this. We've launched several dispensaries, including one in Worcester. This is our second in Massachusetts, and we have two in Oregon. When you go with an experienced operator, you're minimizing your risk of something bad happening. We've got all sorts of trained employees, processes, procedures. We've done this for a long time. We've made all the mistakes there are to make, and we've put together a well-oiled machine now to make sure this happens safely and there are no major issues. One of the most important aspects of that is the seed-to-sale tracking system. It's called METRIC. It's what Massachusetts is using. Basically, this tracking system makes sure that no product leaves the umbrella of the cannabis regulatory system. That's the most important thing. We can't have anything leaving the umbrella and going to the black market, getting into kids' hands. We've got to keep this all within the system, and that's where METRIC comes in. You literally track it with this software from when you plant it as a seed, you manufacture it into a product, or you sell it as flour, all the way to the sales counter. It's tracked all the way through. I sat on the board that developed that software in Oregon. Oregon was one of the first states to adopt METRIC. It was, you know, not a shiny piece of software. It had a lot of kinks when I started on it three years ago. I sat on the board with the Oregon Liquor and Control Commission, which is the regulatory agency in Oregon that regulates cannabis, similar to the CCC here in Massachusetts. I developed the software, and it's the same software. We were really pleasantly surprised and happy when Massachusetts chose to use the software that we're experts at for seed-to-sale tracking. Safety and Compliance Board member, I sit on the board of the OLCC. I mentioned that. The OLCC doesn't pick any person to sit on the board. You know, we've been through dozens of inspections, including minor decoy inspections. They send kids in with fake IDs to test our employees that the kids can't buy marijuana. We've passed every single one. They invite people that are following the rules and are good business people to sit on the board, and I've been really lucky to be one of those people.
You have one minute, okay?
Okay. We'll get to the end here. We talked about financials. We'll keep running through that. Darren covered that, or President Seer covered that. This is our location, 229 Lewis Street. It's 1,200 square feet. Jim covered the parking situation. It was probably the most controversial piece of our launch. We have really great news to share with everyone here in the next couple of days. Parking is no longer an issue. We have plenty of parking. I also want to talk about our online ordering system that we've perfected in Oregon. People can get on our website, order online before they even come to the shop, and they can check out in just two minutes, when the average wait time is normally eight minutes. This significantly improves congestion. There's the plans that you can see there on the background. Last slide I want to cover here, this is our project in Worcester, so when I say that, if you trust us, we're going to start building it as fast as we can. You can see it in Worcester. And I'll go ahead and close with that. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.[1132.16][1132.16](APPLAUSE). Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Paul Coombs. I reside in Parkarav, and I am president of the Goldfish Pond Association. As such, I wish to make clear that the Goldfish Pond Association takes no standard, any business coming into the neighborhood. That's not our place. We are grateful that this company has offered to make a donation to the organization, just as over 100 individuals and businesses have contributed tens of thousands of dollars to the association over the past 39 years. Got to say, I'm a little bit surprised by the level of support. I have heard from members, there's about a dozen people with me here tonight, other neighbors, people who, for the most part, either neutral or slightly in support. No one's jumping up and down over the prospect. But we do welcome a new business to the neighborhood. We do think it'll bring people into the neighborhood that will frequent other businesses. And many of us did attend the public meeting several weeks ago. We were very impressed with the company's intent to resolve parking issues, take care of security, work with us in the future, and offer people in the local area employment. My personal preference is that this shop be approved. We believe that it'll be a positive impact in the neighborhood over time, that for the most part, we won't even realize it's there. We were impressed with the design of this store. It's not in-your-face. It's very discreet, and in fact, unless you know what it is, you won't know what it is. I know some people have concerns about proximity to a school. I'm not sure I quite understand that. As a student at Brickett School, I walked past two barrooms at a liquor store on the way home every day. I was never tempted to stop in for a quick one or pick up a six-pack. It is clear that the level of support for the law is prevalent. I believe over 65% of the people in Ward Three did vote in favor of recreational marijuana. If you don't agree with the law, there's mechanisms to change that. I know because I've employed them for over 40 years. Sometimes, though, you do have to live with laws that you don't exactly like. That's just the price we pay for democracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1281.11][1281.11](APPLAUSE). Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Charlene Sanderson, 22 Atlantic Street. I'm right across the intersection from this place. I give it full support. It sounds like they have a lot of experience. They're going to bring a lot of revenue to the state, to the city. In any dispensary I've ever been to, it's like very high security to get in. If you don't have both your cards, you can't get in. And they don't look like dispensaries. It just looks like a business. Again, on that corner, recent, new business came in, Marquito's, which is a great addition as well, so I think it'll bring some business to them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Jean Curly, and my home is at 273 Ocean Street. I am concerned that right diagonally across the street is a synagogue, and they have classes for children, not only on their Sabbath, but for many days during the week. And they have many classrooms, because they had to come before the Board of Appeals, of which I am a member, and asked to have relief, so that they could put a big addition onto the synagogue for more classrooms. At the other end of this building, four houses and one small building away is another large church, and the same thing goes on there. I just feel that the people who voted you in, all you councilments, they voted you because they trust you. They trust you that you're going to take care of them. You're going to watch out for them, and you're going to make the correct decisions for them. And in my mind, a correct decision is not there. I understand you have to have eight places. I understand if you don't, that they can just put up shop anyplace they want. However, this is not the right place. There has to be some other place that you can find for one more pot shop. That's all. Thank you.[1441.41][1441.41](APPLAUSE).
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jaleen Lavingood. My address is 23 Breed Street, number seven. I want to make clear that I don't inherently oppose the business. I would like to see them move in. I oppose the location. I've lived in this location for about 14 years, and it's got infamously bad traffic on snow days in particular, but also just in a regular commuting workday. That corner is almost impassable. I have found ways to drive around it, but adding traffic to that region is difficult. I understand that we've been told that the parking is going to be resolved. I'm not sure where they're going to magically make those parking spots come out of, because I've never found them, and I've been down there on busy nights when I've tried to find a spot. If they can resolve that, fine. My preference, though, would be to see that business move into a location that has an established parking location, that already has cameras. I know it's not in Ward Three, but the Santander Bank location looks really good for it. I'd like to see them move someplace that is less congested. I support the business. I don't support the location.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?[1536.75][1536.75](APPLAUSE). Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Tim Potter. I live at 14 Hove Terrace, off Breed Street. Let me first preface my opposition with saying that I am not against cannabis. My wife, two-time cancer survivor, just finished going through pancreatic cancer, and now she's a survivor, as well as I'm a survivor, of kidney cancer. And if it hadn't have been for cannabis, my wife would probably still be addicted to barbiturates today, including codeine and oxies or whatever, but she used medical marijuana instead of using that as a pain reliever. Let me say this is, I'm not against the business, but this is wrong in so many different ways. I'm going to start with the most hard, being a former NAACP president. There are about 12, about a dozen owned and operated black dispensaries in the United States. Let me say that again. Out of all the dispensaries in the United States, there may be 12 black-owned and operated. That's my first opposition, because all throughout the United States today, there are young men of color and black men that are still in jail for minor marijuana charges.[1631.83][1631.83](APPLAUSE). First and foremost. Beyond that, I'm not against a dispensary opening up. I am against the location. I wasn't against the Sanderson, because I think a lot of people in the room didn't understand that the Sanderson location, three words would have solved all that drama, no public access. I don't think they understood that. But that the Sanderson Street one, there's, nobody's going to it. Second of all, the one on the Lynn Way, it is commercially zoned. It is in a predominantly commercial area. As far as I know, in that area, there are no housing units or no schools, so I'm okay with that as well. I have lived on Hove Terrace since 1993. I bought the house from, at the time, school superintendent Mazzarias. And there is no parking in that area. I don't have a problem with them opening a dispensary anywhere, but you need parking, number one, and you're in a very congested area, especially at rush hour traffic, that will be a nightmare, unless we're going to go through and revamp the driving perspectives in the area with lights and with lanes. That is an impossible task, number one. And last but not least, let me just say this. They're not even from Massachusetts, okay? I don't have a problem with people trying to make money and move their life forward, but one, there's, I don't see anybody of color in this group. Nobody, number one. And number two, you live in another state, so are you going to make money and then run back home with your money?[1735.46][1735.46](APPLAUSE). back home with your money? So finally, all I want to say is, I wish them good luck. I hope they get a dispensary somewhere else, but in the meantime, hire some people of color. We don't want to see all these white boys sitting up here talking about how much money y'all going to make.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Mr. President, excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. President, everything goes through the chair, no more finger pointing.
My name is Valentin Maldonado, and I represent the Seven Day Adventist Church. We oppose to this dispenser and this location. Our church is across the street. Our kids running around all in that street, and we put in dangers our kids. So they mentioned about the parking is no problem. The largest parking there is our church. They sent us a request. Our church denied, because we don't want any traffic, any kind of this business in the area. I understand, they want to do business. There's many other ways they can do business. We are working hard to save our kids as parents. I don't know how many are you parents on the council. We are the parents concerned about kids. This decision is on your hands. The people trust in you, you represent the people, and we oppose on this dispenser. My pastor has something to do, he can come, but I will share with you a message.
Hello, this is Ervin Ochoa. I am the pastor of the Hispanic Seven Day Adventist Church in Lynn, at the 12 Breed Street, and also the 569 Western Avenue. I want to let you know, the people there at the City Hall, that as Seven Day Adventists, we are not in favor of any institution or store that is selling any drugs or any bad habits that will put in danger the health of the society. As Seven Day Adventists, we believe that we should spread truth, love, and good habits, so the society can live in harmony and peace. So this is a message I want to send to the City Hall, that as the pastor of the Hispanic Church, I do not support, and my members do not support, any store that wants to sell drugs.
You know, it seems like creating a war. We're working hard to keep our kids and the community out of the drugs. Now you, as government, approve that. So this against, you know, the good things the church and we promote, so we oppose 100%. You know how hard it is to see kids and people walking on the streets, right here in the commons? I run a sovereign house. You know how addicted they are to marijuana? People, they lost their lives, they lost their wives. We're working hard to help these people. We don't have to do that if we keep out of the drugs. Thank you. I hope that you make the right decision.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Fidel. I'm from the Seven Day Adventist Church, too. I'm again on this, not because, excuse me, I know that all of you have good argument, again, everything that we say already, because you can prove that there are people that have different condition of health, that can be, have a better life with marijuana. I can understand that through the medicine, but my occupation is about, what, they, it's like I went to the store and buy a gum. It's because you can have a lot of security there to me to get into, but when I gum, when I came out, what can I do? If I go and buy some marijuana, where that I going to use it? Maybe you're not thinking about that, that just, the men say they have a lot of security place, and it has to be an adult, and all those stuff that you can explain, but if I get the marijuana, and I'm free to use it whatever I want. And here is a place, like a few people say already, that there's a lot of kid, they surround like a far different church near from the Lewis Street, and so that is my point. It's not just thinking that those people going to make money, how the source say already, they're not even from here. Of course, you can say, oh, you're Latin, you're neither from here, but I'm living here, and I'm already a United States citizen, and so I work in this place, so I contribute to this state, to this community, and so that what I'm here to tell you to think about it. It's not just that, of course, through this business, the state, this city going to receive some money, but thinking in the future, in the kid that they are exposed to all of this. That all I have to say, and I hope that you made the best decision, but thinking in the future, what we giving to them. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ryan Johnson, and I live at 28 Atlantic Street. And like some other people have mentioned, I'm not opposed to the business. I am opposed to the location. At 28 Atlantic Street, I've got a condo building next door to me, which has, I don't know, approximately 20 units, that doesn't have any parking. I have a building next door to me that has an illegal apartment and four people living in the basement with four more cars on the street. There's a church across the street from me, and they have services on Saturday, Sunday, and several times during the week. I probably call the police department four times a week, because people are either blocking my driveway, you're only allowed to park on one side of the street, people are parking on both sides of the street. I've had my car damaged, this, and then if you go on the, that's just me, if you go to the other side of the street, where Atlantic turns into Chestnut, that road is so narrow that you have to weave in and out just to get down the street. Again, I'm not opposed to your business, I'm opposed to the location, and whatever their parking situation is, I hope it's great, but you just have so much more to worry about there. I do understand that the city makes, will make some good revenue here, and that a certain percent of it is supposed to go back, and if you do support this, what I do ask is that you do have an officer, that is, going on Breed Street and Atlantic Street and so forth, that will be dedicated to this area. So if you can, if you are going to support it, please have a dedicated officer for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ilse Flores. I live in 559 Western Avenue. I'm here because, before, I'm not here for every problem happening in this city, but in this time I came because I'm worried. I don't know, thinking in your heart, what are you doing with the Lynn? Because when I came from New Jersey, 2005, everything here is diff, was different, but now, I saw many people younger in the street, dumb, walking, because they drove, because they drink. I saw, so sad when I saw that. Our younger kid grew up and everything. These guys younger, they don't know nothing, this new generation. They know nothing about the world guys living. And I don't know, but before, when I live in 559 Western, we have a big lot over there. The owner seller, and somebody buy, I think the city, I don't know who buy it up, but now we have a shelter over there. Every day, every night, I have a lot of people in front where I live, because I live close to the shelter. They smoke marijuana, that's so nasty. I have my grandchild, I have my more kid around, and they smell that, grow up with that. They not intelligent after that. I don't know what the guys, they want to make money, I know, but they have another way, because we, I worry about the younger people in Lynn. I saw you before, and I don't like, you know, everybody dying about that. And when every guys be a government, they say, I promise, we do that, we are with you, but the truth is, everybody doing everything different, thinking, what, what are you doing in this night? Because I don't agree with the other place you approve, but at this night, please, before you doing something, thinking, and the little kids grow up, I'm serious from this state, from this USA, but I'm worried about the youngest. Only I say thinking, I hope so in God, I hope so you take the good decision, because Lynn is good if you make a good decision. If you don't make a good decision, Lynn is down, every day, every day, you saw many accident happen. Do you want that for the, our family, because supposed to our family in this state? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Jane Lavoy. I live at 39 Basset Street in Lynn. I'm opposed to the proposed opening of the Cannabis Distribution Center. The location is near both schools, a public grammar school right down the street, near churches, near daycare centers, and it's also on the edge of a residential neighborhood. I live there because it's a quiet, nice neighborhood to live in with children and, you know, people who are happy and keep their houses clean and do a good job and want to be here in Lynn. But I don't want to have to walk by a marijuana dispensary on my way to go get coffee, or on my way to go downtown, to do any business downtown. And it's a terrible location. It's a very public building, it sets a very public example of it's okay to sell and use cannabis, in my opinion. And it's also, the traffic is, it's just a terrible location traffic-wise. There's always traffic there, there are always people dropping their children off at school, picking them up from school, and as I say, there's church nearby, so there's always traffic there. I'm also totally opposed to the proposed opening seven days a week, you know, and going into evening hours. It just, the whole, the whole scheme is just detrimental to the city and certainly to that area, so I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
This is in Taurete, I live in 1C4, Atlanta. I understand the marijuana is hurting for the body, but everybody had different body. Everybody had different reason. That people.
Please do not point.
Okay, that people don't care to the, to the, to the people, that want to money. You need think about, because the city vote for you are, you is with our voice. You can't take one decision and go sleeping. It's the people, when drink a cold, not can driver, but when smoke marijuana, they are can driver. It has accident, it has something. Why you think about that? Put it you, you hang in your heart and think about, because you are not living here. I think maybe you're living out to the, to the Lynn. You are not have problem, your family not have the problem. I have kid here, in the summer, sometime I go to river. This summer, I not can go, because I not can, I not can go to the park. You know, everybody is different, but the people don't want how I feel. The people want you money and make rich. That's not fair. Think about the people. What can do? You know, you have child, you have family. I eat only the women, I have two daughter. I try my daughter walk straight and not make nothing danger, you know? Because I want to live in the cities, in the city, security, but the Lynn now, now, is not sure for my, for the family. You know, you stay over there for the people. Think, not, not look the money, think about the people and make the Lynn sure for my family. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Walikiri Alagizamo. I live at 6 Sergeant's Court, and I would like to help people reflect a little bit about the fact that we have a lot of liquor stores, and what, when that was approved, I imagine that the thought behind it was the income, and I imagine that that brought a lot of income as to, you know, because there's got to be a reason why we had so many, right? All I keep hearing is, you know, the income that this is going to bring, and this is going to blossom this community, because it's going to bring jobs and money and all of that. If that was thought through for liquor stores, I have something to tell you, okay? I volunteered for the Lynn High Schools for a year, and I had the honor to meet some amazing young people, but I also had the opportunity to see how alcohol was being used by them. How they got it? I don't know. But I can guarantee you that when all this was approved, the liquor stores, you also promised that this was going to be secure, and they would not be able to touch it. Now, as a community, how do we portray to the people we serve? Because when all of you signed up to be representatives of us, you promised that you would represent us and look out for the best interest for us. Now I tell you, I'm looking at it from over here, and what I'm looking at is a bunch of liquor stores and kids getting drunk. I don't know, maybe you can help me find out how they're getting it, but it's not secure, and nothing guarantees me that they're not going to get a hold of marijuana, not that they're not getting it already, but as a community, if we are responsible to give an image or to inspire our youngs, we need to make a better job at the decisions that we make for our kids. I have kids, I'm raising kids, and I care about them, and I'll do everything to show them to do the right thing. I imagine that you would do, too. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jessica Murphy. I live at 42 Basset Street. There have been a lot of things set up here about why we shouldn't have it, why we shouldn't have cannabis. I'm not going to reiterate everything that's already been said. What I'm going to say is that I walk my daughter to school every day, and there are people sitting on the sidewalks, probably intoxicated from the liquor store that's down the street, and I can only imagine that adding this cannabis dispensary in this area, which is for recreational use, not medical use, is going to only add to the problem. When there are people sitting outside on the stoops, falling over drunk, punching each other and getting into fights in the building next door to the elementary school, I can't imagine that, only because it's two blocks away, that it won't have any effect on our children. We have a church across the street, we have after-school programs there, and this is going to involve them. There's no way to avoid it. The other thing I do want to say is that if the council does decide to move forward with this location, which we probably shouldn't for all of the reasons that have already been stated, I would ask that there is a guaranteed percentage of that income that goes to our public schools. Our public schools need the money, they need the guaranteed income, and if you're going to make this decision, at least give the kids back the money.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Susan Desmond at 30 Autumn Street. I'm opposed to the location due to the parking situation. I think it's premature to approve this without dedicated parking already established, because if they're, if they do have a satellite location, people are still going to try and park near the store, and there's no, there's not enough on-street parking for the residents, so it's going to deeply affect the residents in the area to find parking spots. The parking is so full that they're parking on the sidewalks up and down the street there, so that's why I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, in opposition? You've already spoken, but I'll give you one minute to speak.
Yeah, this one is going to be very short. I'm really totally opposed of them having that place there. Number one, there is a school nearby, and also the value of the house will go down if a lot of people comes here and go to that place. Number two, number three, there is no parking. I don't know how they're going to do it, but it's no parking over there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, as a taxpayer, the value of the houses will go way down, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, my name is Herman, and I'm pastor of Ministerio Mios in AD Broad Street, and I represent the church, and actually, two congregations. And as you see, we have a representation of a few congregations over here, and that are surrounded by the area over there, and we are totally opposed to that. And we are totally opposed to that business in that location. They can go somewhere else, wherever they can sell it. I mean, I'm pretty sure they will succeed if they go somewhere else also, but not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?[619.66][619.66](APPLAUSE) Please state your name and your address.
My name is Moisés Rodríguez and I pertenezco...
My name is José Rodríguez and I'm from...
I'm from Dominica, from Lynn.
I'm from Lynn, but I'm originally from Dominican Republic.
Ah, and I, yo soy miembro de la Iglesia Adventista del Sétimo Día.
I'm a member of the Seventh-day Adventist.
Que está ubicada en la pres, número doce, Pres Street.
That's, that is located on, what's the...
Número doce, Bre, Bridge Street.
Number twelve, Bridge Street.
Yeah. Yo vengo esta noche...
I'm here tonight.
...a presentar otro problema que hay en la, in el área.
To present your attention all the problems that we have in the area.
Yo andado buscando, este, a un amigo mío que él tenemos un grupo...
I was looking for a friend of mine that we have a group, a team?
Este grupo americano aquí en la Broa.
A group of Americans from Broad Street.
Que él ayuda mucho a la persona cuando tiene un problema o habla con los representantes del City Hall.
So he's always helping people when they have a problem and then that person usually go to help them at City Hall?
Pero no me he contratado con él.
But I don't have a chance to get in touch with him?
El problema que pasa en el área...
The problem that happened?
En el área hay muchos drogadita.
And there's a lot of people that using drugs?
Yo estoy viviendo aquí en Lynn desde 1997, viajando.
I've been living in Lynn since 1997.
Y he trabajado aquí.
And I've been working there.
He trabajado en la Unión.
I've been, I've been a union member.
Y ese tiempo...
And back then?
Tanta, Lynn era tan peligroso.
When Lynn was so dangerous.
Tenía, yo me acuerdo que tenía dos carlos de policía.
I remember back then, there was only two police officers, two patrolmen.
Y tenía una guagua...
Two cruisers, excuse me, two cruisers.
Y tenía una guagua para los detectives.
And there was like a boss for the detective.
Era una ciudad tan danger.
It was so dangerous.
Porque en cada, cada quina había un punto de droga.
And every single corner, there was like a place where people were selling drugs.
Era un desastre.
It was a disaster.
Especialmente la comunidad mía, que yo soy dominicana.
And especially in my community, and I'm Dominican.
Ella no trabajaba, sino eran vendiendo droga.
They were not working, they only simply were selling drugs.
Le gustaba el dinero fácil.
They love to make easy money.
Entonces, si la comunidad estaba un poco limpia, no está limpia en Miami, pero está un poco limpia, porque vamos a aceptar que un área, que un área ahora que está ya tan danger.
Lynn is a little bit better now, but we got to accept that the fact is there's some area in the city of Lynn that need to be, that it's very, very dangerous.
Eh, hace un mes atrás.
A month ago.
Eh, ay, yo estaba en la iglesia, salimos el miér, un miércoles a la nueve media, a la nueve de la noche.
It was one night at nine o'clock. It was a Wednesday night at nine o'clock.
Cuando yo veo que entraron a la iglesia.
When I saw that they get inside the church.
Veo dos personas.
I saw two people.
Se entraron a, 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 a la galera, que está debajo un portón, que el portón estaba roto.
So the door was open, but to get in, it was at the bottom?
Eh, y no fue la primera vez que yo visación.
It was not for the first time that I saw this.
Y yo como miembro de la iglesia.
As a member of the church.
Y representando la comunidad.
And as someone else saw that leaving the community.
Yo, este, cogí y había una señora de, que le llamaban Marinela.
There was a lady, I think her name was Marinela.
Marinela, que es bien amiga del gobernador de votum.
She is a good friend of our governor.
Yes. Este, le dije, yo le dije, Marinela, yo voy a entrar, a ver qué es lo que está pasando con esta gente.
And I said to her, Marinela, let me just get inside to see exactly what's going on.
Cuando entré.
When I got in.
Eh, el que yo me acerqué así, lo vi a ellos haciendo seso, orar.
And I saw them. Excuse my French.
Excuse me por la palabra.
Can I say it?
You have one medicard.
Hold on.
You have one medicard.
Okay, so he said when he gets in, he saw two people having...
Y usando, y usando droga.
And using drugs.
No es una, dos y tres veces.
Not for the first time.
Que se ha usado, que esa, esta, se han entrado a la iglesia a hacer eso.
It's not for the first time. The first time they've done it. They've done it a lot.
Yo creo que no, eh, eh, si tienen otro espacio, que vayan a otro sitio, fuera de la ciudad.
If they could find another place outside of Lynn.
Porque esa es una ley del gobierno, yo, este, hay que respetarla.
I know it is the law that we have to follow the law, but...
But, pero uno tiene que pensar qué es el problema que trae en el futuro y cuál es el problema que tenemos ahora en esta situación.
We have to start thinking about the problem that we have now and problems we might have in the future.
Y para la comunidad de la Iglesia Adventista y para la comunidad hispana y los americanos que vimos aquí, no importa la raza que sea, no estamos para estar en esa situación para que venir los tiempos de antes.
It doesn't matter about your ethnicity. We do not want to go back to the way things used to be in Lynn.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Let me quickly say something. There's a gentleman that said earlier that we should assign a police officer in this area. I don't think we have enough police officers. We only have 170 for more than 100,000 people in the city of Lynn. So that's not a good idea. And also, folks, you guys have to understand, this is an election years. People are watching. They paying attention, as you can see. Usually, you only have, this room is always empty. That's mean they mean business tonight. So do the right things. Thank you.[1004.04][1004.04](APPLAUSE)
Before you say anything, take, take the, thank you. Okay, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is George Manateus. I live at 30 Kings Beach Road. And I'm here to, I'm not against the marijuana, but I'm against this location. I mean, let's be realistic. It's a bad location. There's no parking and, you know, we got out of status. And I'm totally against. I'm asking the council tonight, every one of you, to vote against this. And if you vote for it, you're voting for a bad situation because there's no parking. And that's all I'm going to say. Simple as that.
Thank you.[1048.38][1048.38](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Merida, 61 New Hall Street. And I am here, I know they are looking by the money side, but I'm here to tell you as a mother, as a community member. As a mother, my son, he's 15 years old, and he has to walk that area two times a day. And as you know, as a teenager, you are put in this type of, in this type of situation, like to get a curiosity, to know what is that about? So that's, that's why I'm against of that. As a community member, I am a member of a church. And we work so hard to create programs trying to get the young people out of these types of habits. And when you approve this type of business, you are going against the work that we are doing to our community. So please go against this.
Thank you.[1128.54][1128.54](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Ed Maldonado at 23 Manson Street. I'm a member of the Seventh-day Adventist, 12 Bridge Street. And one of the things is they all just, is where they want to put the location is two churches. Basically, it's one on the front and one on the right side. One of the things concerned is basically for the residents in that area is the parking. They already struggling complaining, complaining because the church has their own parking, but sometimes when we have big activities, the neighbors complain of the parking issue. One of the things we complain, I help also with the youth in the church. We always take walks around to the beach or around the neighborhood with the kids in the summertime. So we know that it's a lot of halfway houses there lately. That area is not like it used to be. The church has been there since 2001. And we seen how difference the neighborhood and that area has been changing. Where they thinking to plan the store is not even one parking spot for them. Everything is a street parking. So we know that's going to be a struggle for them. They offer security. They always say, oh, we have the best technology, cameras and all that stuff, but the city is struggling for security. We don't have that security on the city for all the residents. One of the complaints that I always don't like is the city always say we have business or it can help us improve and all these things. But with recently, last year or two years ago, they approved taxes on the trash. So we still getting more taxes with this business coming in. I don't know how they're going to approve that too. They always say for schools and all these things, but we still paying the big amount of taxes. The other thing I can see is, is a business that everybody want to come in, is a big, easy way to make money. We know if not, wouldn't be enough drug dealers around because they know it's an easy way to come money. Children's is one of the priority things that we always look in the church, in the community, any community you guys look into, even the neighborhoods you live or the other people out of state live, children's is the priority. We know that, we always try to keep a good environment for the kids. If you know there is danger on one street, you try to walk on the other side of the street, especially if you have kids, you don't want them to see that part. One of the things too is, like they saying, when they approved the liquor store, they didn't see the consequence they brought in. We notice, people always say it's recreation, but not everybody is responsible on using the things. You guys, everybody knows that, not everybody is responsible with the alcohol. So how we know the recreation drug is going to be helping? We know that is underage kids that drinking alcohol. So what make you think that it's going to be underage kids using the cannabis has a recreation or it's not going to be like a use for them? So what, that's one of the things that you guys have to consider, think about it. What we doing and how we going to improve the city? Is this the right way to improve the city or it's not? And like everybody saying, we all watching. We vote for you guys to be here, represent all of us. And there is other people that we looking to represent as us all the time. And we hoping for you guys to do the right decision.
Thank you.[1339.54][1339.54](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Michael Murphy. I live at 42 Basset Street in Lynn. I will reiterate the fact that Lewis Street is a major thoroughfare and a mess at both rush hours. I have another concern, which is we are two blocks, or that dispensary would be two blocks away from the beach. And we already have a problem with people walking down to the beach and smoking pot in our neighborhoods. We smell it. I smell it out my window as they walk by. And if we think that people aren't going to go to the dispensary and pop down to the beach and smoke in our parks and smoke on the beach and smoke everywhere, next, you know, with my children in the yard, you know, if, if we can't, if we can't give tickets, if we can't start punishing people for, for flaunting the law and smoking in public, then I'm not interested in giving them another vehicle to do that in my neighborhood. So I'm obviously against it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1396.33][1396.33](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, good night. Honorable member of the council, Mr. President, to all the lawyers and the mayor. It's my obligation as Hispanic or Latino friend to back up all the people who came up today. I think everyone's agree, they are not against the business, but against the location. I think it's pretty clear. For the first time, I noticed there is a few dozen of Latino people. So please take in consideration to hear the Latino voice. Please take in consideration that. And I think you have to make sure to represent all of them and all of us. When I hear that the company, they are trying to donate $10,000, I just want to say something very simple and quick. This year, I start to organize people cleaning parks, streets, and we almost reached 2,000 volunteers hours. If you take a pain, 2,000 for $15, all these people invest in Lynn, $30,000. Simple as that. And you guys are making a million dollars and try to buy the community with 10,000 people. So I think please take in consideration all the appreciation that the Hispanic community is doing. And I think you have to make the right decision tonight. Good luck and thank you very much.
Thank you.[1496.73][1496.73](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ifren Canasto and I live at 145th on Lewis Street. It's the building right next to the school. Where I live, there's a lot of homeless people. All of them are drug addicts. They're always high, they're always doing crazy stuff on the streets. They get into my building, they sleep on my stairs. They smoke weed there. They smoke cigarettes. If you go through my stairs, you can see cigarettes everywhere, cigarette butts. The area is contaminated with drugs and you want to add more drugs to it. Like, I don't think this is a good idea in any way. They already talk about all the problems that they see on it. The problem I see on this is that this area needs a cleaning, a police cleaning, to take all those people out of there. And you want to add a store that's going to bring more addicts and more people scheming about drugs and stuff. Like, this is not a good thing for the neighborhood and it's not a good thing for the city of Lynn.
Thank you.[1570.83][1570.83](APPLAUSE) Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Yes, my name is Alvaro Zepet. I live in the 61 New Hall Street, Lynn. I'm not against to the business, I'm against to the location because it's my backyard. I live 800 feet from that location, that's why I am here.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else?[1598.63][1598.63](APPLAUSE) Ma'am, please be brief. Please be brief. I'm going to give you one minute because you've already got up and spoke.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure someone else had a voice before I came up, that's why I came up last. If I can appeal, of all these people, can appeal to the hearts of the people on the council. If you could appeal, please, to the people, the key word is business. One point I want to bring out is now people are more bold. They walk down the street. I was walking down the street, this is in broad daylight. A man was walking towards City Hall, smoking marijuana. They put it in their hand, thinking nobody can see it. I went to a store next to the police station. A group of people were outside the door. I had to walk through smelling all that, breathing all that smoke. Other people are breathing this. This is a health issue. This is a, appeal to your conscience. This is blood money. Money I would not want to have on my hands to make a profit by. A state trooper was killed. He was driving, a person was driving under the influence of marijuana. That wife, if she could be here, she's heartbroken. She lost her husband. Let's think of this with our conscience and our heart. There's other ways to make a business, a living in life. You are made for something better. You are made for something better. Do something constructive, something productive for humanity. There's too many people dying. My cousin was killed from a drunken driver. He was driving in a car, the man was drunk. He was killed.
Yet 30 seconds, okay?
But please, appeal to the people. You don't need to do this business. It's not money that you want to have on your hands. And God, no one mentioned him, but he is watching us. Let's not disappoint humanity.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?[1731.04][1731.04](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aristo Reynoso. I'm living on 157 Lynnfield Street. I'm here tonight because I'm part of the U.S. Christians and Chaplain Association. And we do the service for this city. This city is beautiful city. My concern is tonight, if you guys approve this, I have a kid, I have my grandsons, I don't know what's going on in the future. So I'm not support this.[1759.51] So I'm done support this. Please, listen to all, all these peoples, because we love Lynn. We, thank you. We needed Lynn, beautiful, beautiful city. That's why we trying to do something better for Lynn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing on that part of the area is closed. House of Lords.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Seer.
Thank you. Before I make a motion, um, I'm gonna make a statement real quick. Ward three precinct three, six hundred and fourteen people voted in favor of recreational park, five hundred and forty-eight didn't. Eight hundred and one voted in favor in three, four, five hundred and eighty-four didn't. Those are two of the largest votes in the city, in those two precincts. In ward four, Councilor Clucci, five hundred and eighty-five and four-three voted in favor, four hundred and fifteen didn't. Four-four, seven hundred and seven people voted, two hundred and fifty-nine didn't vote in favor of it. Your ward was one of the highest percentage-wise in the city for voting for it. Now, again, as I said earlier, I agree with a lot of things that are said here tonight, I truly do. I can understand why people are opposed to marijuana. I voted against it, as I said earlier. I voted against recreational. I did vote in favor of, for medical reasons, because I watched my father die, and it helped him at, at the end of his life. I know about kids, I have kids, I grew up here in the city, I've lived there sixty years, and I hear how people say they love the city. I love it as well. I'm trying to figure out a way to help our city, as I said earlier. And, hold on, please, I'm speaking. So, the ordinance says that we have to have eight dispensaries-
Put it somewhere else!
Hey, there'll be no more outbursts.
The ordinance says that we have to have eight dispensaries, and they're supposed to be evenly placed throughout our city, so that everybody has equal access to it. As I said earlier, these are the most secured facilities in the city. And I can see the anger on some people's faces, and I get why people would be upset. I am not gonna put my colleagues in a position right now to ask them to vote, either way. I'm gonna ask them to table it, so that we can have more discussion. And we have asked the community in that area to get involved. The reason why there are so many people that are sitting here tonight is because of the effort made by myself and the people that are, are trying to open the dispensary. We went and we leafletted and put on Facebook and talked to everyone. Now, just so everybody understands, that this isn't just something that I, I just on a whim. For the last two years, a lot of people have come, there was a dispensary that wanted to go at the old JD's, hundred and eighty-nine feet from Brickett School. This dispensary is probably about seven hundred feet. If we decided not to let a dispensary open up in the city, because it's too close to a school, there wouldn't be any, and then we'd be in court, 'cause they'd be challenging us. Goldfish Pond Association was gonna be a benefactor to them to open up. That group goes out every year, and they cut the grass and plant the flowers, and they take care of the water, and they raise the money by themselves, with no help from the city. They would've been benefactors from this. Unfortunately, tonight, they're not gonna be. And I'm not gonna get into it, and I don't mean to scold anybody, 'cause I saw all the passion of everyone who came to the podium tonight. But there's a lot of stuff that nobody really understands about opioid, uh, about, uh, park dispensaries, it's not opioids at all. So, these, the drugs, the cannabis actually helps people medical-wise. It's being proven on a daily business, on a daily basis in a scientific world. It does. Say that to the sick people who are benefiting from it. That being said, I make a motion to table.
Motion to table, do we have a second? Non-debatable. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, to table. Counselor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Stabed?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Five-minute recess. I know nobody can see me, I'm behind the wall here, like the Wizard of Oz. So, before we get started with our next public hearing, um, there's gonna be an appointment made tonight on behalf of the mayor and myself, Walter Peruvian, to the Water and Sewer Commission is, uh, the representative for the mayor's office, is a sewer commissioner, so I make a motion to approve.
Motion ma-
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Uh, Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, for Walter Peruvian?
Yes.
Counselor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Clucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Stabed?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes. Okay, the next public hearing is to accept the plans for the harbor, and I don't know if the mayor wants to speak first, or if he wants to, you wanna speak first, mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some brief remarks, uh, I know you've got some, uh, information in front of you, and this has been an ongoing process, but I wanna thank you and the members of the council, uh, and I'm here in the, uh, tonight in support of the adoption of these three important plans. The Open Space Plan, the Revised Waterfront Master Plan, and the Municipal Harbor Plan. These three plans were a priority for my administration since I took office almost two years ago. They're critical to creating opportunity for development on our waterfront, and at the same time, carrying out our community's vision for that area, which will include substantial open public space. I think that's an important piece of this. There was a substantial public process that took place over the last two years, public meetings, public discussions, public input, and these plans have been before you and before the public for, for, uh, for many months, if not over a year, year and a half. And that is where, what led us to the final plans, these, again, I wanna be clear on this, these are actionable plans. This allow us, allows us together to create action that addresses, uh, and moves forward our vision for what we see as the future for our waterfront. I wanna say, a special thanks to Jim Coudell and his team at EDIC, as well as our state partners for leading, uh, during this public process and helping us to get to this point tonight where it's in front of you on the council. These plans, and I just, uh, a final point, tonight you'll be, uh, hopefully you'll be, um, accepting these plans and moving them forward. As part of those plans, there'll be, uh, recommendations for adoption of zoning changes, uh, which I look forward to working with you, uh, and continuing to work together on adopting those in the future as we move forward. The first step is adopting these plans, and like I said, you'll see some really exciting things, and I'm really excited about, uh, the work that's gone in, and I do, and I was talking to a couple of you before, uh, this, the, the piece of it that's as exciting as all the other development that we will see, is this sixty, sixty acres of open space that will be a dynamic and exciting piece, that I think, not only in the region, but on the East Coast, will reflect something really exciting for the City of Lynn, and I think you'll hear about that tonight. But again, I'm here in support of this, and I look forward to your hearing this plan, and, uh, I'm glad to be here, and hopefully you will move these plans forward, we can continue to work together on what we see as a, uh, vision for the future of the City of Lynn. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, my name is Jim Coudell, I'm the Executive Director of EDIC, which is the agency responsible for economic development for the City of Lynn. Um, I wanted to thank the mayor for his support of this process, but also the city council. We had, um, o- over a dozen meetings in the last year or so, many of the city councils attended those meetings. It doesn't work without the city council's, uh, support and input, so I wanted to thank everybody that participated in all of those meetings. Uh, UTIL was hired by EDIC, uh, to be the lead consultant on the Master Waterfront Plan, a- as well as the Municipal Harbor Plan, and Brown Richardson Row, who's here, was the lead consultant on the Open Space Plan. And I'm really psyched about the process, I think it gave everybody an opportunity, uh, to speak, whether it was elected officials, residents, businesses, et cetera, everybody had a chance to have their voice heard. I'm here tonight in, uh, obviously in support of these plans, I hope that they get accepted, so we can move on to the next step, which will be setting down a public hearing on the proposed zoning changes. Um, at this time, I'd like to introduce Kurt Gertner. Kurt has been an ally to the City of Lynn on, on many projects, he's my partner at the state level, he's my go-to person, and he's been great for the City of Lynn, and I'd like to turn it over to, to Mr. Gert. Kurt?
Kurt Gertner, work for Secretary Theodore Hardees at the State's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. One way our office was able to, uh, be part of the Baker-Pleito administration's effort to support the City of Lynn, to work through the Lynn Lead Team, is to help you to plan for the future. Uh, we're pleased to have been able to, to support the work of Brown Richardson and Row, landscape architects, to, uh, engage in the public process the mayor and Jim described, to help the city develop its vision for the waterfront, and to bring the expertise, uh, to put that plan down in writing, so that it could be before the council this evening. Uh, given the hour, I will keep it to that, uh, just to simply say, we were pleased to be able to help the city in this effort, and, uh, as well as, uh, know that the plans that are gonna be presented by Clarissa on behalf of Brown Richardson and Row, Clarissa Rowe, Principal of Brown Richardson and Row, will walk you briefly through the plan, uh, plans, and then you're going to hear from, uh, UTIL briefly again, relative to the other two plans before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, please. Clarissa Rowe, Brown Richardson and Row, Registered Landscape Architect. I'm also, um, I have a big voice, so I don't think I need the microphone, because-
People on TV can, uh, people on TV can hear.
Oh, they can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll walk with it then. Um, I, I know a number of you have been to our meetings, and to our walks, and we're really grateful for your input. This was a, um, wonderful public process that was continued by UTIL and, um, Durand and Astis, and as you know, and what I'll do, is, let's see how far this goes, um, we go from the Everett Bridge, all the way along the waterfront with a new promenade, and then we go to Lynn Heritage, and all the way, almost to the ocean. So the idea is, one of the things that's happened in many waterfronts in New England is that there's a continuous promenade. We have a little trouble, 'cause there's a gas tank in the middle, and we have to go in, but that's, you know, what, what this is, is a, is a vision for the future. We think there's real possibility, you'll see in the middle, the large part that hopefully will happen on top of the old landfill. Um, DCR is committed to working on the two ends of Lynn Heritage, and around the, um, Edward Everett Bridge. So if you have questions, I'm more than willing to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you. I've been to the site, I know there's some work going on down there with capping of the landfill. One of the things, we have an opportunity to talk about parking in that area, or the possibility of public parking. A lot of the public access along the water that we've had over the years has been unsuccessful, because there really isn't any parking. As much as everybody would like everybody to be on a bike, we're not, so, is there opportunity?
No, I think that, I completely agree with you, and I think this is the one area where there is public parking, where the ferry terminal is gonna be. I think in this master plan, what we're dealing with was, in the future, and we've shown, um, parking areas all along, like here, here, and there'll be parking here. So, I think as the development parcels happen, you need to be vigilant and watch the parking, and make sure that there's some parking, but maybe not re additive parking. Some of the development, uh, proposals have a lot of parking lots next to parking lots. So I think there's gonna be plenty of parking, but I think the public access, the whole point of this is public access. That's, that's what we're trying to do, that's what our, um, our State, um, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs really thought very carefully about. There's a lot of thought given to climate change, we've come up with a, um, elevation along the waterfront that needs to be met in order to deal with the climate change. So there are many parts of this plan, it is a plan, but we're hoping to see it, um, turned into fruition very soon, with the two DCR parcels at either end.
So i- if we vote on this tonight, is this something where what I'm seeing now as green is always gonna be that way, or is this something that has opportunity for input?
It has opportunity for input.
Okay, thank you.
And any, you know, look at the plan carefully, we're more than willing to pass on the, the concerns about public parking, but we have, we've have tucked it away in places.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually have a couple, do you have one? So, uh, one of my questions is, why assisted living in a W three district?
We have, um, nothing to do with the assisted living. I'm just the waterfront open space plan. You have to-
They'll be next.
They're next. I'm just the open space, public access person.
You only want to allow three-story buildings in the W one area?
That's not me either. Yeah, save it, save it for them.
Get him over here.
They're ready. We've been waiting, we were, we're excited.
So you had the fun part?
I did have the fun part.
Thank you. So, so we're, we're looking at this area and saying, this is the conceptual drawing, that I think everybody's kinda come up with an idea, this is what we should do, but i- it could still evolve, it'll be, it'll be parkland and waterfront open space, but how we, what we consider it open space, or how we would manage it later on, is still up for, I guess-
Yes, it's, it's the beginning of, of the plan. What we're hoping is that the promenade will go along the whole edge of the waterfront, with the, um, we have to go inside here, because of the gas tank.
Okay. I just, I know, I know you have to adhere to like ADA regulations, and my concern with the parking again, is that, that there are people who probably can't bike, or things of that nature to-
Like me.
To try to use, and it would be something that we should be, you know, at least aware of, and I'm sure we are, but I just wanna bring it to them.
No, I think that's part of public access, and it's, it's part of getting everybody to the waterfront, 'cause not everybody can walk very far anymore, and, you know, we wanna make sure that everybody can use it and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
My name is Matthew Latell, I'm Principal at UTIL Architecture and Urban Design, uh, in Boston. Uh, we were engaged by the EDIC to, uh, do the, uh, Harbor Master Plan, uh, update, as well as the Municipal Harbor Plan. Uh, the, the Master Plan is really an update to the two thousand and seven Master Plan that was conducted by Suzuki, which presented a very bold vision for the waterfront, but it was very difficult to implement for various reasons. Uh, this plan represents an effort to create a much more flexible, realistic, and implementable framework that will support the Open Space Plan. And I'll briefly list some of the, the high goals here, which is, uh, number one, create a flexible planning framework that enables the implementation of the two thousand and nineteen waterfront open space master plan. We've worked very closely with Brown Richardson and Row along, all the way. Number two, maximize the success and impact of development and infrastructure activities already underway. Number three, create a mixed-use district that provides public access to the waterfront for everyone, and works for housing, retail, commercial, and industrial uses. Number four, connect surrounding neighborhoods to the waterfront area. Number five, ensure a balance between new residential development, job creation, and public benefits. Six, clean up and develop areas that have been underutilized, and seven, identify options to buffer conflicted uses, so they can comfortably function in proximity. Um, our general framework consists of acknowledging that there are some long-term industrial uses in the middle of this site, um, such as the water, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, as well as commercial activities that are, uh, doing well, such as, um, Solomon Metals. We also acknowledge that there are residential developments that are occurring, uh, both, uh, at the northern end of the site, um, as well as proposed residential development at the south. Our framework, uh, is really an attempt to create some buffer and transition zones between those conflicting uses, um, and a way to envision a very vital mixed-use, um, uh, district. The zoning changes that we're proposing, uh, as part of this plan, the Municipal Harbor Plan, are consistent with that. Um, for instance, um, expanding the WF three zone, um, so that light industrial might be allowed, uh, in close proximity to the wastewater treatment plant. The Municipal Harbor Plan Amendment, uh, follows both the Open Space Plan and the, uh, the- The municipal harbor plan amendment follows both the open space plan and the waterfront master plan. The earlier municipal harbor plan that this one would amend was difficult in that it relied on open space that couldn't be delivered for one reason or another. The emphasis of the new municipal harbor plan is to create a framework for licensing that is simple, that occurs one plot at a time, and will sort of streamline development opportunities as they come up, as well as preserve and enhance open space, and most importantly, as the most powerful tool for implementing the open space plan. The open space plan has numerous places where public has access to the water. A large number of those will require adjacent developments to sort of provide those. The open space plan, I'm sorry, the municipal harbor plan, has also added some, what we call amplifications, to increase some of the standards over basic Chapter 91 requirements in terms of the qualities of those open spaces.
Counsel, have any questions? Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just looking at the map, am I right here? The WF1 zone. Back in April, there was a proposal by Mr. McGrath for a storage facility that was supported by the entire council. How does that type of project, which was ultimately denied by the zoning board of appeals, fit into that particular zone? So that we know what type of projects going forward to support, and what would fit with the zoning in that area?
Currently, in, our proposal does not include any warehousing or storage uses.
In that particular zone?
In that particular zone.
Any other questions? Counsel Walsh.
The 200-foot waterfront setback, what was that originally? What was the purpose of that?
So the waterfront setback was originally a fixed distance of 200 feet from the water. It was a mechanism that was put through the municipal harbor plan to increase that public access area and the open space in front of the water. We've introduced a mechanism that allows that to be a little bit more flexible, so that it's a minimum of 100 feet, which is consistent with underlying Chapter 91, but requiring developers that are affected by it to have an average of 200 feet. So in other words, the minimum would always be 100, but the additional open space could be made up by being greater than 200 feet in other locations.
Any other questions? I'm going to ask my question now. So assisted living in that District 3 area, why is that needed?
It's not essential, but we have added uses there. We see the WF3 as a transitional zone, as a mixed-use zone. You'll see, we've also added boat construction, commercial fishing, hotels. We don't, we think an assisted living facility is not inconsistent with that, and there could be possible locations for it as a sort of complement to these other uses.
Okay, and why limit maximum height of the eight stories in the W-2 area?
We've actually increased the height. There is some existing buildings in there that is a much thinner and more narrow part of the waterfront. In addition, Chapter 91 will impose its own height restrictions anyway, because those lots are very shallow.
Right, right. So, but I mean, you're not saying that if somebody wanted to do a 10-story building, if they had the far enough setbacks and all of that, that, in your opinion, it would be good or not good?
We think that the eight stories is appropriate, because there's some, it's consistent with some existing buildings that were there, and it's also increasing the existing allowable height to be consistent with new allowances in the building code.
So you think that allowing three-story buildings in the W-1 area is a matter of right is okay? I mean, I'd like to see that higher than that as a matter of right?
In W-1?
W-1, yeah.
I wasn't aware we had a three-story cap. I think that the height limit is much higher, but...
Three-story minimum.
A three-story minimum.
Three-story minimum, right?
Yes.
By right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, three stories on the water, especially now with the meeting that we had tonight about the, what the capping they're doing? They're talking about that being as high as 70 feet. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
So if you're only building a three-story building, you're not going to have a view of the ocean if that's what you're trying to do down there, am I right? So it wouldn't make sense to, you'd try to get them to do it a little bit higher to increase the value of what they're doing.
I think we saw three stories as high enough to prevent there from being just flat, single-story retail that didn't contribute to the area, but a kind of minimum that allowed enough flexibility. I think requiring something higher might be a challenge.
Are there any other questions?
Counsel Staub.
Thank you, Mr. President. With waterfront 1, can't that, doesn't that go up to like 200 feet?
Yes, that's the maximum.
Okay.
Yes.
So you can do a 20-story building there by right in a WF1?
Yes, I believe so. I'm looking at Andrew Namias from my office, knows a lot of the details.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any more you guys want to add to it? That's it?
Not at this time.
All right, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the wish of the council? Counselor Seer.
Thank you. Motion to accept the 2019 municipal harbor plan, Lynn waterfront open space master plan amendment, and the 2019 revised waterfront master plan provided that the city does not adopt pages 37 through 39 of the 2019 Lynn municipal harbor plan amendment proposing zoning changes. The Lynn City Council will adopt amendments to the zone ordinance incorporating the suggestions in concept of these reports, but reserves the right to modify the proposed amendments contained therein. Motion to accept.
Motion made. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Excuse me, we did not open the public hearing for those in opposition.
Oops. You're right, we did. So we got to open that up. Anybody in opposition?
Is there anybody in opposition? State your name and address.
My name's Jonathan Feinberg. I live at 18 Empire Street in Lynn. It's been a long night. I appreciate the patience of everybody on the other side of this podium. I'm going to try to keep my remarks brief. First, I'd like to thank everyone for all of their effort over the past several years working on this plan. I've been at as many of the meetings as I could possibly attend. It's been a great process. It's one of the better community processes I've seen. However, I do have concerns on a couple points in all of these plans. First, the reality of having real public access in this park, which looks absolutely beautiful, and I really do hope that it comes to fruition. But the whole reason this process got started again was because the Beacon Chevrolet site, which was supposed to be a park in the last harbor plan, was then rezoned for condos. So we don't know if the capping is going to happen at a reasonable pace. We don't know if National Grid is going to do their job in a reasonable timeline to clean up their part of the site. So how do we have any guarantee that this will actually become a park? That this will actually be the solution to the problem that was created by the development of the Beacon Chevrolet site? And secondly, as a representative of the new Lynn Coalition, which is a coalition of 13 progressive community and labor organizations here in the city, I have to speak against the adoption of any development plan that excludes a vast majority of the residents of Lynn, simply because we don't make enough money, and simply because we don't have the same income levels as people who will be commuting to and from Boston every day. We believe in housing for all of us. We want to see the city develop in a way that represents all of us, and frankly, this plan, by the exclusion of any affordable component whatsoever, hurts our city and will continue to hurt our city moving forward. And I thank you for your, very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none? That part of the hearing is now closed. Should I read my motion again?
Yes, Mr. President.
Does he need to?
Yes.
Read it again? All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve, and then I'm going to address what this gentleman just said. Motion to accept the 2019 municipal harbor plan, Lynn waterfront open space master plan amendment, and the 2019 revised waterfront master plan provided that the city does not adopt pages 37 through 39 of the 2019 Lynn municipal harbor plan amendment proposing zoning changes. The Lynn City Council will adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance incorporating suggestions in the concepts of these reports, but reserves the right to modify the proposed amendments contained therein. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have something to say. Being an employee at the Lynn Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, I have the opportunity to watch them work as they've been working on the open space capping of the landfill. I got to tour the facility, tour the area, and this park that is about to come to the Ward 6 area, I think is very exciting for a lot of the residents, and we just hope that it keeps moving forward the way it has been, and a lot of people are really excited for the future of the waterfront.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Seer.
Thank you. We're just sitting this down to, we're approving what the harbor master plan says. We're not adopting the zoning changes, so there's still going to be a procedure to go back, take a look, listen to the concerns of the residents and the business people of the city. There are some things in there that I like, there are some things I don't, whereas Counselor Walsh might like the things that I don't. That's what we're going to be doing, is debating, and we're offering everyone an opportunity to present whatever their suggestions may be as well. So we're not trying to exclude anybody out of the process. We want everybody to be a part of it.
I was speaking specifically to the housing, not the process. I thought this was a beautiful process, just for the record. The hearing involved a lot of community members participating.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. Any more public hearings?
No more.
What's next?
Public hearings to be set down.
Set down, public hearings to be set down.
Petition of Juan Del Rio, owner of R.E.M. Auto, for a Class 2 auto dealer's license at 26 Bennett Street, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6 p.m. Petition of Mary Ann Staney Unis, owners of Uncommon Feast of 271 Western Ave, to amend the special permit granted on 3/26/19 for cafe and event space that includes stipulations of hours from 9 to 6, and limiting food service sales to occupants of the building only. This amended petition request will also be to add wine and a beer license as a common victuolo with hours from 9 to 10 p.m., seven days per week. Petition of Michael N. Jika, owner of The Banquet Event Center, Inc., to open a restaurant and banquet hall with a sale of all alcohol beverages on the premises. Petition of T.C. Systems, Inc., to install underground PVC conduit at 130 Western Ave between Columbia Ave and Superior Street. Purpose of installation is to bring service to customers at 130 Eastern Ave. Petition of Keenan Bryan for Extendant Systems for permission to construct a small cell wireless telecommunications facility to be attached to an existing utility pole located on a public way at the following locations: 131 Essex Street, 560 Essex Street, 125 Green Street, 170 Union Street, 72th Street, 145 Broad Street, 85 Liberty Street, 210 Market Street, 18 Alley Street, and 330 Linway.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports, utilities. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ways and Means, Counselor Net?
We have, we have six items tonight, but we approve two items from the committee. I'd like to make a motion to approve that. I would like to ask the clerk to...
Motion made to approve. Seconded. Seconded. Before I ask the clerk to read, we also made a motion tonight as well that any transfers be brought to the, to the Ways and Means to be discussed, and then they lay over for two weeks. So no matter what the transfer, the only transfers that will go through, because the money's already there, would be if a grant or something like that comes in. But I just want all the counselors to know what's been going on on the Ways and Mean. So I'm going to ask the clerk to read the two transfers.
Certifies an available fund, the amount of $60,224.82 is allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department Training Grant. Certifies an available fund, the amount of $23,547 is allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant.
Motion has been made, seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes, and I know there were no emergencies, correct?
No emergency, Mr. President.
Okay. Recreational cannabis, Counselor Stavitt? What an interesting evening we've had.
We haven't talked enough about this tonight. One item, Mr. President, was the approval of Essence Labs to operate at 8286 Sanderson Avenue. A unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes. Licensing, Counselor Walsh.
A unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public properties and parks, Counselor Stavitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items on the agenda. Request from the election chief to hang a banner on City Hall to remind people to register to vote. Request to hang a banner on Boston Street from the Lynn English Drama Department. Vote to transfer property at 21 Michigan Ave into a joint partnership with the Lynn Housing Authority, and to allow the use of the Johnson Street lot on Sunday, September 15th, for, as a staging and parking area for the parade. A unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business, I just want to say this weekend, Saturday, is the march for violence, am I correct?
Yes.
From English High School to...
It'll end at Warren Street Park. So it'll start at 4 o'clock, and it'll end at Warren Street Park, where there'll be music, there'll be a DJ, there'll also be food for everyone. Also, the first 400 people that come will receive a T-shirt, and I just want to say thank you for the Lynn City Council for sponsoring the food, and McGrath Enterprises for sponsoring the T-shirts, and also Super 7 Subs, Jamaica's Flavor, and Alfredo's Italian Kitchen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And also, I want to say that because this past weekend, the Goldfish Pawn Flea Market was canceled, they're doing it this Saturday, and I know all you counselors are going to show up down there, especially... to show up down there, especially Counselor Calucci. They will be looking forward to greeting him this weekend and saying hello and taking him around. I hope you buy some raffles down there because they're selling raffles.
Thank you for the kind words, Counselor President.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.